So, um. So, next item, Ms. Ramsey Calderon.
Rocket, Franklin, Etherly, forward, five present, one absent.
Um, you've got the agenda before you. And we're gonna ask Judge Jason Carter if he would come forward to the microphone. And he has a presentation he was patiently waiting last couple meetings, I think, to be on the agenda. So Judge Carter, welcome. Appreciate you here and I'm gonna recognize you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers for having me. Here before you today asked for a couple trucks for my court officers. Got a packet there for you, just an idea of kind of what I'm looking for. I would like to have a four-wheel drive and a two-wheel drive if possible. Main reason on the four-wheel drive, if a officer has to go out and serve, you know, somewhere out in county down a gravel road could possibly be, you know, bad. The other reason we ran into, I guess, last month, they went to a training in Little Rock. And I think there was some snow and ice on the ground. They wouldn't be able to get there and back if they wouldn't have a four-wheel drive vehicle. So that's, that's the reason why I'm asking for a two-wheel drive and a four-wheel drive. The current vehicles we have now, we have trucks, 2008 model, it's got about three hundred and seven or eight thousand miles on it. It's got some transmission issues. It's been in the shop. I think they've kind of done some patching on it, try to get it where it's drivable. But it's already starting to have issues. The Jeep is a 2003. It's got about 190,000 miles on it. It's got issues with lifters and valves. And yet, both of them, we've had for a long time. And so, this is just kind of what I had in my mind. And I appreciate your consideration on it.
Thank you, Judge Carter. Questions? Mr. Franklin?
Judge, sometimes you can, sometimes before you even took office, you had, they had two new vehicles on the list. Before you getting new vehicles, will you put these, these vehicles, the auction, the old vehicles will be auctioned off?
I guess whatever the normal procedure is, I'm, I'm fine with whatever.
Well, will you, will you have city decals on these?
Yes, absolutely. That, so that's, that's something I want to make sure we have the city decals because I want to make sure that members of the public know when these vehicles, you know, pull up outside their house and they're, they're to serve papers or warrant or subpoena, whatever it may be, that they know that it's an official city vehicle. And that's who's coming to their door, not just some, you know, random person off the street.
How long would it be before you receive these new trucks?
All the ones that I've showed you right here, it's my understanding they're on the lot. So I think we get the approval for the funding, we can get them as soon as, as soon as possible.
So you have, the district court has this money available to get these? You are, so, so they do, this is what I.
It's my understanding that we have the money in the court fund. If that's fine, I'm fine with coming out of there as long as that's an appropriate place for it to come from.
So this is coming, not out of general funds, but district court funds, right? So that's what the auditor said. I move that we, great, sorry, just a moment. Don't be standing. No, no, you don't turn it.
You know, are these new vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, so this was on to state procurement.
Whatever that process is, I'm not familiar with it, but all the vehicles that are on here.
They're on state bid contract.
They're in Jonesboro, they're in Batesville, Arkansas. So they are, all are in, located in Arkansas. I found some cheaper in South Haven, Mississippi, but I did ask Mr. Valley about whether or not we could do, you know, the vehicles from the state. He said they need to be in-state to be able to use the procurement system, which again, I'm not familiar with, but however that works.
Well, and to elaborate on Mr. Valley's question is, if it's on state bid, what that means is the state has already bid it out. And so they have been bid and we can choose from that list. And that saves a step, saves a step for us. So just to clarify. These are on state bid, on the state bid list.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I move that we, I move that we grant the judge a question to the vehicles. But this should quote with city decals on the vehicles.
Ms. Franklin moves that we approve two vehicles as requested by Judge Carter, seconded by Ms. Davis. With city decals, with the understanding that city decals will be placed on vehicles as soon as they arrive.
Absolutely.
Remain on the vehicles. Any questions or comments?
I don't know about anybody else, but I got like three or four different vehicles. Which ones is out now? But they're different prices. So I don't know what the first two are, two-wheel drive.
Thank you, Ms. Rocket. Judge, I think we need to be specific about which ones and how much they're appropriated. As my understanding, this is cash coming directly from the district court fund, Ms. Ramsey.
So ain't gonna be no payments on these? I know, but we got, I got, well, I got two, two-wheel drives and two four-wheel drives.
Yeah, the four-wheel drive that's on the page by itself, I think would be, is, is the cheaper of the two four-wheel drives.
Forty-five, sixty?
Yes. And then, as far as the other one goes, I, I don't really have a preference on that. I just, you know, I didn't, didn't want to get the one four-wheel drive and that is the cheaper of the two four-wheel drives. As far as, I don't know, I guess if they're state contract, you wouldn't get a better deal by going and getting two from the same place.
Are these not at the same place?
No, you just pay whatever the state prices on those.
The three that are on their individual page are at the same place. The other five are at Jonesboro. They're, they're all at the same place. But I would, I would ask for the, the four-wheel drive that's on the single page from Batesville, Arkansas for forty-five, six, twenty-seven. And. Yes, ma'am. I believe that's.
I got the four-wheel drive, I'm having the two-wheel drive.
Should be on the last page. The last page is the four-wheel drive, I believe.
Uh huh. I got, I got that one right there for forty-five. Which of the ones are you asking for, for the two-wheel drive?
The two-wheel drive, I guess we could just go with that one in the middle. On the, on the page with all the profiles there.
The one that's thirty-five, six?
Yes, ma'am.
Judge, out of bounds of caution, what's the number you're actually up to? So we can have that in motion. Cause you have four to six and thirty-eight, I believe. We don't know right now whether either one of them has been sold since you've been standing here, so.
Right. Do you have to, I guess, sales tax included in that or? I guess I would ask for. Up to. Forty, forty-seven thousand dollars on four-wheel drive. In case this one in Batesville is gone, that would give us enough for the other four-wheel drive. And up to thirty-seven thousand dollars on the two-wheel drive. And that would, that should be enough to.
Eighty-five thousand. Eighty-five thousand.
Ms. Franklin, you accept those numbers as part of your motion? This, who's second? I don't know. Ms. Davis, do you accept those numbers as part of your second?
And.
I have a question, cause he said thirty-seven, but one of the wheel drives is thirty-seven, eight, so. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Still saying thirty-seven, maybe thirty-eight.
Okay.
Thirty-eight, forty-seven.
Ms. Davis, you accept the amendment, the second amendment?
Any other questions?
But it's paid before.
Yes.
Eighty-five, I think.
Eighty-four is what I just said.
Well, man, do, do you have any numbers after that? Just kind of rounding up.
Sorry.
Is it, is it just forty-seven even and thirty-seven even?
Cause it was forty-six and he went to forty-seven. And it was thirty-six and he went to thirty-seven.
I mean, I think that would be enough to get the two that were, so.
You're, you're good with eighty-four?
Yes.
Okay. So the, the. Ms. Franklin agrees, Ms. Franklin agrees and Ms. Davis agrees to amend the motion to eighty-four thousand out of district court funds. Up to eighty-four thousand out of district court funds. And also, it's appropriated, it's shown in the budget, it's appropriated.
Well, this will be an appropriation even if not in the budget. Just to be able to say particular appropriation.
Well, just maybe be on the safe side. Let's, let's say appropriation and appropriation.
I'm saying, what, what you all are doing to appropriate the money right now, even if it's not in the budget.
Right. So we'll. I raise that issue because the auditors have brought it up and we can discuss it later, but. It does, it needs to be clear that this motion both appropriates and authorizes expenditure up to eighty-four thousand dollars as requested.
The motion is what it is.
Is there any objection to including the word appropriation in the motion?
To, to what?
Include the word appropriation in the motion. There's no objection, let's include that in there. So the motion is to appropriate and authorize district court and Judge Carter to purchase up to eighty-four thousand dollars out of district court funds, two vehicles with decals posted on them. Anything I need to add to that? It's restating the motion. And it was made by Mr. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Davis. Any other questions or comments? If not, Calderon.
Ford? Davis? Rocket?
Yeah.
Franklin?
Yeah.
Etherly? Two absent, four yes.
Thank you, Judge Carter. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you, councilmembers. Y'all have a good evening.
All right, next up, also been, been patient with us, Assistant Chief Marcus Borm. You want to come forward and discuss your request? Mr. Hadler requests they be recorded as a yes vote on that previous road call. Mr. Borm, you are recognized, sir.
All right, thank you. Well, today, y'all, we come to ask for your permission and your blessing to purchase a new pumper for the Hallowell's Fire Department. This will, this new pumper, you know, is, and of course, a new model. It is, is gonna have a twelve thousand, well, twelve thousand fifty-gallon pump. It's gonna come with a thousand-gallon tank, you know, it's a newer model truck. And it has a different engineering that from experience is gonna allow us to cut down on our maintenance costs. You know, fuel and a few other different things. This, uh, this new pumper that we're asking for is also has an extended cab on it. So fireman is responding, it'll help cut down response time because we'll be able to arrive on scene already packed up, ready to go. Instead of having to get there and then get packed up once we get there. So it's, it, it has a lot of benefits and upsides. And then it also gives us opportunity to put a, a quality pumper as our backup pumper. Cause it, it'll help take one of the old, older pumpers out of service. And granted, the pumper that we're asking for would pay for out of Act eight, there were three. So it wouldn't come out of general funds and, uh, and, uh, once we, if, if you approve it, you know, it'd be a year before we have, have to make any payments towards it. So we have a year to get ourselves situated. We have a few different financing suggestions that I'm pretty sure will be ran through by the mayor and the city attorney. Got a few other things that's going on with it as well, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you all may have.
Just, just to clarify, Assistant Chief Borm is here. Chief Brown had some, some deaths in the family. And just want to explain why Chief Brown couldn't be here tonight, cause I know he wanted to be. He was here a couple weeks ago and waited patiently. So we just want to send our thoughts out first to Chief Brown as well.
We appreciate that. I'm appreciating he does as well.
So questions?
I move that we are getting this truck, Ms. Ramsey says it's Act thirty-three money. Will hurt us one bit, you know, is that true, Ms. Ramsey? So Act thirty-three, Act thirty-three, is that what it is? So I move we give that.
Act eight thirty-three.
Act eight thirty-three. Thank you, Mr. Bad. I was stocked up. I came out of here because it was a lot of them, but thank you so much.
Yes, sir. The truck will cost three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Through E1, EBS. The deposit will be the sales.
How many years is?
Oh, we're looking to do financing for ten years, ten years. It's forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars at an interest rate of three point six eight percent. That's one that we're looking at now, but it's some cheaper interest rates that's out there that's up for us.
It's a few different options. Yes, ma'am. It's a few different options.
Step, step in and let us know. We had the red team.
We, we were looking at UST rule development, and I know it's much lower interest size, I couldn't remember what the term, but the term is a lot more favorable to the city also.
Yes, sir.
But I couldn't, I couldn't remember what the term was. The UST rule development has a loan program for fire trucks. Two point one two five, but the payment terms were different too.
Yeah, it was a little lower, lower.
Lower, the lower, the interest rate's lower. Anyway.
We would not do this in two parts, because we don't have an agreement to approve tonight.
Yes, sir.
We'd have to prove the financial part, then come back and prove the actual agreement. Cause we, cause I, I can't tell you the terms of agreement of whether they're, they're good for the city or not without seeing it. But the second option you could have, you could prove the subject to the review of the city attorney on the, on the financial agreement. But the, the mayor would need to see the agreement and et cetera, and I would too relating to it. I don't know if you all want to do it in two parts. You want to approve it and approve the potential financing and authorize the mayor to, and not to finish it. Or if you want to do the appropriation tonight and then come back and do the contract on a separate day. It's up to you all, how you all want to do it.
Kid, the treasurer, explain that where this money be coming from, because we say Act A.
Act eight thirty-three.
Right. Explain to the general public because.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Franklin. That's an excellent question. Act eight thirty-three is funds that are specifically received by the fire department for the purpose of equipment for them. They received it monthly and it's money that they could use for the purchase of equipment. And it's used in a limited fashion, particularly for equipment. And over the course of years, the money begins to add up because it's only, that's the only purpose it would be useful. So it never comes to the city's general fund, it's set aside specifically for the fire department. And they're actually using those funds for the purpose of purchasing this, this truck.
That's correct. Okay, that's correct.
And I would just add, Act thirty-three, Act thirty-three is, is state money. So it's state money that goes, is set aside for city municipal rural fire departments can only be used on fire equipment. That goes and distributed throughout the state, and that's our portion. So it's not even city money, strictly speaking. It is, it becomes our money once we get it, but we have to spend it according to those terms anyway.
Yes, sir. Along with a few other things, but it, it pretty much sums it all up. And what we're asking for is just to get your approval to make this purchase if possible. And then like, like we say, we can always, you know, play with the finance options to see which one we can get with the cheaper interest rate. It'd be lower than this, possibly lower than this, because we have seen a few, you know, and it's just what's ever in the best interest of the city. You know, however you want to move with, with the finance options. And we just want to make sure that we can, you know, get the go-ahead to get one of these trucks started. Because we'll be done paying for one truck this year and next year, so those are gonna free up funds. So by the time we make the first payment, one of the trucks already be paid for, you know, because we're currently paying, yeah, possibly three. Yeah, because we're currently almost finished paying up for the tanker and a few of the other pumpers that Chief Wilson, he got when he was here. So those, those funds be free to spend on, on this new equipment, not just the truck, but the equipment is gonna go on the truck as well.
How long will it take them to put this truck together for you?
And that'd be between eighteen and twenty-one months is how long it would take. So that's kind of another reason why we would like to go ahead and see what we can do for us getting it approved, so they can go ahead and get, get started on making it. Now granted, once the commencement is signed and everything, it'd be a year after that day before we actually even have to make a payment towards this, towards this truck. And one of the trucks will be paid off between that time.
I actually get to, my only question really, Act thirty-three, Act thirty-three money is, is generally something, I'm sure historically, the city's always allowed the fire chief, assistant chief, fire department to kind of determine its own priorities. And I'll take this opportunity to say, we have one of the best fire departments in the state of Arkansas. And a lot of people in our community don't know that. And that, and that's because we don't tell them enough, and they just presume that we're not first in anything, but we are. And fire department, I don't know about first, but we're one of the best in Arkansas. And that's a testament to the leadership over the years and, but anyway, having said that, the question is, because we won't pay for it a year until a year from now, it's really gonna be appropriated in the next fiscal budget, but we're authorizing and appropriating. I don't know if we're appropriating it or not, but we're authorizing you to go ahead with ordering it and to set up the terms of financial agreement to come back to the council.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Valley for approval. Does that sound about right?
That's correct. And to further illuminate what you just said, the constitution of the state of Arkansas says that, that the city cannot even have evidence of indebtedness without.
You also got.
Did anybody else get a four percent rate?
But you also, yeah, everybody got a four percent rate. But you also got promotions and salary increases with those promotions this year, didn't you, Ar?
That's true too.
And accounts approved, approved it, so.
But you do still have people leaving your department too, right?
We're working on that.
Okay.
If I may say something from the record about the fire department. Part of it is for a fire department this size, our fire department is so well-trained that you will continue to have an issue of retention because people see how well-trained our firemen are. And they go to other departments and they pay them and come in and they have experience in all types of things that most small departments do not. And I agree with both the mayor as well as Mr. Franklin, that you have one of the best-trained fire departments in the state of Arkansas. Especially if you compare its size to, to, we probably have the best in this size. And so, so people from Little Rock and et cetera, we have a lot of officers that leave here and go instantly get hired in Little Rock and other places because they're so well-trained.
Councilmembers who, I wish he was here, so he can, this can be echoed around him. He's not here tonight. I would love him to be here so he could hear this about our fire department. They just don't run out to Walmart. They save lives. They do their jobs well.
So, Ms. Franklin, so you, you're withdrawing your motion. And Ms. Davis, your second is withdrawn as well. And so. And officially voted on as far as appropriations and all of this. Does that sound good? Um, Mr. Form, you're not done?
No, sir, we have, uh, six, we have two more orders of business. Uh, the second would be to, uh, change the title of our, uh, administrative captain to, uh, battalion chief. Um, and all we ask is just for a title change, the pay can stay the same. And, uh, his duties and responsibilities will increase. He will take on more, but the pay will stay the same. He's already doing the job and we're just asking for a title change for him to go from administrative captain. To battalion chief, putting him third in command at the Hill on West Elm Fire Department. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I wish I changed it to. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Probably should did the first half.
All right, I don't, I don't just say, to your request, this freestyle is to change the title to battalion.
Chief.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, Ms. Franklin.
We would have to say, basically, I wouldn't know whether this is going to be actually like, but we had to say is that the base player wasn't named to position seven.
So, so nobody know nothing, just, just title change.
That's all these actions. But we would have to say the base base to come back. When I said the base pay, I'm just meaning the order.
Administrator captain to, uh, battalion chief.
Battalion chief.
Why, 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 what, what's the benefits of?
See with him being administrator captain, it puts them on, they put him at the same rank as all the other six captains. Where he's making, uh, executive, well, administrative decisions. So when it, in, in the rank structure, it becomes a conflict. Because when he has to give an order to somebody at the same rank, even though he's acting in the seat of the chief or the assistant chief. You know, legally, you know, it, it starts to bump, bump his a little bit. So let's change him to battalion chief. So that way, once the order is given from Chief Brown and myself for him to execute whatever duties, what responsibilities we need him to do. He'll have the power and authority to be able to do so, even though he's doing the same job.
Right. But you have a battalion chief, right?
Yeah, we used to have the position and we got rid of.
Yes, yes, who's different since salary?
He making a difference in the salary now.
Yeah, 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 it's a difference.
What I'm saying, because he just got it, right?
On this point, point's well taken. So, Mr. Valley, now we're talking, it might be worthwhile to come back with a chart that shows all the positions and how that would work.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I have no problem with doing that.
Structure, because he started talking about structure when I told the man, so we want to make sure that we see it visually.
Actually, the structure wouldn't change. It, it'd be the exact same, except the cap, the, uh, the administrative captain title will change. Because he's still right above the, uh, all the other captains, because he answers directly to us and then they answer directly to him.
Will, will you, so we're talking on the same page, will you look at your SOP manual and the structure page you have that?
Yeah, it'd be right in there.
Right, I'm saying, we can just vote, they can just vote to, to approve that structure from your SOP manual.
Yes, sir.
And that'll just take a resolution.
Yes, sir.
And so, once you retype that one page, we approve that one page, yes, SOP manual.
Okay, so you want to go back and do that and then bring it to next time you want to vote on that?
Next time, I don't know how much longer they're going to be here, but.
Okay.
We just want to have the structure laid out.
Yeah.
In your SOP manual.
Yes, sir, we would do that.
Did you ever change your SOP manual? Does it still say?
So, yeah, we, we have made changes and, uh.
No, I'm talking about the administrative chief versus battalion chief. Did you ever change that in your SOP manual?
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah, we've done.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's already in the package.
Okay.
All right, so, um, I'm, there's actually a motion on the floor still, and Mr. Franklin just left. There wasn't a second, so we'll just say the motion died for like, I don't think it was. There was a second, did you say, this stays, you withdraw your second?
If you just bring it back so we could do that and make it clean, just this updating that page for your SOP manual.
Okay, did you all have this in, in, in your package?
I don't have it. Yeah, it's a job description from the, about saying this, 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 right? Yeah, we can bring both those, the job script and the, and the right. Yeah, when I said the rank, I mean the chart.
So Chief, Borm, you understand what? So, so it's, I mean, I, I've already approved this, because he brought it to me and, and I'm okay with it. It sounds like the council's okay with it, but they want you to bring it back in writing, so.
That's fine, that's fine.
Uh, if you have any questions, let us know.
Yes, sir, if you all have any more questions for me, anytime, then I make sure I get that, uh, get that written available to you for the next meeting.
You had a second thing.
Yeah, oh, yeah, uh, approval of some, some deals, uh, maintenance deals from, uh, EEP. They exceeded five thousand dollars. Uh, we had some work done on some of our pumpers. Um, and we're trying to get that taken care of so we can move forward with them.
Was it less than seventy-five hundred?
Yes, but one.
One was, the other one, I think it was eight thousand.
One thousand, one of them was six thousand one sixty-two, the other eight thousand eight sixty-three. But they had to go to specialized dealer because of the fire trucks, the fire pumpers.
One, you all can approve, the other we've had, had to organize to prepare the bidding waiver. For one, you all can prove without doing a prepared bidding waiver. Because seventy-five hundred is the current limit that you have for without bidding.
We, we talk about bills, then we talk about for all bills or just five of our bills?
Yes, yes, us, the fire trucks are, we was using a service, uh, at Memphis, but they got bought out and we had to use another service. Uh, because the people that we use now couldn't work on this ticket in.
This, this your idea? Since though the mayor said it, because we got a whole bunch of bills here. I don't want to jump, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I do apologize.
These bills y'all trying.
They had these units until March from, from December?
What, nah, no, sir, uh, some of them have been back since then, but some of them they had for extended period of time. You know, some of the work and, and everything was on back order, you know, with, with the parts and equipment coming in and then with the labor getting it done. So it was, it was a big drawback with the, with the supply chain. You know, it may take a month or so, just or longer for certain parts to get in. So they kind of slowed up the whole process too. And actually, we'll kind of help open our eyes to knowing that we need another vehicle, a quality, uh, backup vehicle. So when stuff like this happen, we can continue to offer our services without a hiccup.
These big companies that are working on these garbage trucks and fire trucks. They don't bill us until everything is back and working, in case they have to bring it back in, do more work to it, then they can add to. So it may be three or four months before we get anything.
Right, I understand, but I understand you're speaking for clarity for the record, I understand. Um, now, uh, to address Miss, Miss Crockett's issue. Uh, part of it is what, what ideally what's supposed to happen is when they do the requisition, they're supposed to have an estimate as to what it is. And probably as I see, what, what should have occurred is more communication back from these, these companies in writing to tell. Here's our estimate, what it's going to cost before we go forward and finish this. Because this, this is showing like it's the first invoice. It said net thirty days, it does not say past due.
No, it is, it is the first invoice, yes.
And then some of the issues that we were running into, they'll get started on a job and then run into another issue. You know, in order to complete their job and then this, you know, we, we get the first being is we'll land five thousand on this thing, you know, it's, it's a little over five thousand dollars. And you're kind of going back and forth, just like one of the trucks we have in the shop right now. Um, originally it was one price, but once they got to work, they realized we had so many issues underneath that we never knew about. Uh, so now, we, uh, we set money aside or was issue, we'll try to put it in the budget to where we'll use them to do yearly maintenance. On our vehicles so we can address these issues ahead of time, so it won't cost so much. And let a small problem become a, a larger problem. So that'd help save us a ton of money, you know, uh, and we've been having issues, we're getting mechanics here local too. I mean, it's been a huge issue. So everything that we do, we have to send it off to someone, not trying to throw anyone on the bus, but it's just some of the issues that we're dealing with right now. We're trying to make the best of what we got. And, uh, but if it's in other ways we need to handle this, I'm open for suggestions. And I'm pretty sure we can move forward and making some better decisions for us getting these things taken care of and bringing it to you. Make sure you're aware of these, uh, large, uh, maintenance, uh, deals that will have them come in, so.
You haven't thought about get, because see, we have a, we have a city, we have somebody at City Mechanic, right? Do we have that here?
Work on some of our vehicles, yeah.
I've seen do the city.
Wilbur Schotter does a lot of work on some of their trucks, he doesn't do anything on our fire trucks.
So we'll get to that in a minute, because there's some questions about some stuff that I see get, but. We, we, we have to sit out stuff to maybe, you know, create. Yeah, this was small, so, yeah, it's very small. A lot of, a lot of stuff, not that we have to sit off, goes to Memphis and other places.
Yes, sir. Memphis, South Haiti.
Have you all thought about, you have a fireman who, who was a diesel mechanic school, it would likely, you all try to implement him somewhere. Chuck, but it's not, we want to go to the candy fire fighter to work on your trucks and stuff here that would save you all the tolls and burdens.
If you, if you willing to do that, I'm pretty, we had a few guys in our department that fit that deal.
Well, she, well, not me, you all should try to put something together to help the city. Because spending this kind of money, we had a personal here, they could be a firefighter and work on this equipment. If we can get the parts of it, that's something you all need to work on and I'd be happy looking forward to. But the pri, the prices and things like this, I think y'all, you, you know, I'm, I'm willing to help, you know, I can. Just looking at how much money we spend outside, you know, when you all have that. Because we work on some more issues in the city with mechanics, because I see a lot of issues that hasn't been addressed, I see people getting paid. Nevermind, go ahead, but that's something you all can, that you, I wish you all could look into and see how that works better for you all.
I, I, I will do that and I get that information to you, it wouldn't take me long to get that, I promise you. But another issue, I just want y'all to be mindful of the fact that a lot of the issues that we're having at our trucks aren't just regular diesel mechanic issues. It's pump issues, it's actual, yeah, the pumps, other trucks and a whole lot of mechanics can't work on those. It, we need specialists to work on those, because like I say, we have a high call volume. We fight a lot of fire around, we're one of the businesses in the state. So we put a lot of wear and tear on these vehicles when it comes to pumps, lines, mains, stuff like that. So, uh, they'll go, if you, if you look at it, a lot of this stuff is related directly towards the pump and pump operations.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, not saying that, I, I understand that, you, I don't know about it, because you, you, you know. I'm better, we're making the department better. Listen, I'm, I'm not kicking against you, I, I, I want to see you give what you need. So, uh, by these two things, uh, I have some objections, uh, that need to be paid for, uh, but.
So, question for the council, special for the council is approval of, uh, two invoices. Over the five thousand dollar limit.
Yes, sir.
Uh, established for me to approve or sign anything, so, um, any other questions?
I must have asked that one of, we had to do an ordinance, waiver compared to bid and all of that.
Right, there's eight thousand. Eight thousand dollars had to do with better bidding waiver. Six thousand, you all would just prove that.
I still move with the six.
Franklin moves approval of the six thousand, I'm not actually looking at.
Six thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars and four cents.
Yes, sir.
It's stated by Mr. Valley. Invoice. Pump repair. It's, it's your second. It's Crockett's second motion.
You, we're going to wait until you get an order? Do we have to wait on that, a later, a later day?
Uh, I, I can see what I can do, depending on how, how long we be here, to see what I could do it later today.
I'm just asking, I'm, no, no, I'm just asking.
Right, but he's coming back in two weeks anyway.
That's, that's what I said.
Okay. Any questions or comments about the motion on the floor? It's Mark Colgrove.
Franklin?
Yes.
Davis?
Ethel Lee?
Yes.
Ford?
Yeah.
Crockett?
Yeah.
Five years.
I should pass. Um, so we approved one bill, the other bill, uh, you're going to get Mr. Valley on.
Bid waiver order for the next meeting.
For you or anything like that. So I'm just gonna announce it tonight, take any questions you have about it. The Bissell. Kathy Bissell. This foundation is very supportive. In fact, they're also about to announce another spandeter clinic in May, like they had at Walmart last year, that spayed neutered over five hundred cats and animals, dogs. And it's just been instrumental to everything, uh, we've tried to do in, in our city. This is private money, it's not taxpayer money.
The spade and neuter for the whole Phillips County area, and I just held the western.
It's held and held, and we benefit probably more than anybody.
Well, I have this question, well, I thought it was a hundred thou, I thought it was gonna do a hundred thousand dollars.
What's a fifty thousand dollar matching grant? So they would get fifty if we get fifty, is how that works.
When, when initially came, they was gonna just give us a hundred thousand dollars, that's what was first quoted to us. On the Zoom call, they, she, when she was here, Mrs. St. Columbia, all those. My, my, I think is, I, we, 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 we do need animal shelter. But the last time the city got involved in that, what happened? So I, like I said before, I'm, I'm wishing that the lady that does bills on wheels, uh, anybody out there that handles dogs, that you get in touch with them and they work up something. You know how we, we, we used to, uh, give, give, uh, people who rendered us services, like the churches, like the Boys and Girls Club? We could help them, but I don't think that we, as a city, should get involved with, open up a facility. I think it'd be best for us, so people who are nonprofit, who got their five oh one C threes together, and we could better help them. Because we have police, fire, uh, all kind of other issues that we have to hear, the water, all these other issues that we have to worry. Dogs are important, but right there, we try to keep it help, west help going. I do think that it, it's a good idea. But it's the people out there, if Miss Kathy Bissell could donate fifty thousand, we could help. I mean, as, as the mayor of the city, I, I do believe that you have resources and you have friends too. You know, see, see what, what other things out there grants to help, help us, help them. I'll get on the bandwagon to help, but as this, at, at this way, we got an edible control guy, we, we, we can help with that. We got two, I think we got two certified people. We could help with those people, they could help. Uh, I think you, you, you said in the past that that they would, that the county would give us the old, the, the old place that the, uh, who bases out here, right?
And they, they've offered, the judge has.
But, so I mean.
I don't know that the county's officially done that.
Right, but see, and, and that's a start. So fifty thousand dollars is a good start, that's a start. This, we, we, you and, and, and some people that you know of, that you're good friends with, perhaps that you all can sit down at a table with, with the council, or with just a committee. You can speak, you love committees, you can spearhead a committee to get together and see how can we get this done. The city can, I, I'm just one vote, I'm willing to support something that the city does, does not own and operate. I'll support that, but I would, I'm not in favor of held the west held the city getting involved in that. I'll support whatever you got, that we could afford, that our treasurer can say, hey, that it won't hurt us and we can help, help. So I think that Bill, the, the person who owes, that runs these entities out here, who are, who, who have success have ran these programs, who animal shelters, you, you know, some people who have successfully ran these entities. I would like to, some people, I, I want the council to get with that, those people, you as well. And smear with you. You got, you got enough people out here that support Kathy Bissell, made a nice contribution of fifty thousand dollars. The judge has also said that he would help us with that. We'll have to build a bit, and we, 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 we could use what we got over there and work for what we got.
The city can constitutionally and in compliance with state law. Uh, we can, uh, contract with a third party to make those type of funds that you're saying. Uh, because the city is authorized to operate a, uh, kennel or, or a dog pound, and for any legal purpose that the city is authorized to do, you could, you could contract with some third party to do it on your behalf. Or you, you couldn't make a donation, it would be that they're doing it in lieu of the city doing it.
Okay.
We would have to do a contract and, uh, uh, but it can be done, but it'd have to be worked out. I think it's in the city's interest, best interest, for us to eventually do something about dogs. They've been roaming ever since. It was a big political issue twelve, fourteen years ago. And being a big political issue, now the dogs are out of hand everywhere. I got a call today and they told me they called, the mayor's office today about three dogs on Columbia Street as well. Uh, but, uh, it's one of the issues that's, that's prevalent in the city. The mayor didn't have all the details tonight, but you all on conference call, it is, the city can appropriate the matching funds if it so chooses. And it's still, uh, be operated by someone else if the city is not going to. Because the factor for you to consider are how many employees you want to have, what type of facility they're gonna have, where you can locate them and all those type of things. And that's additional resources, but I don't know what issue the third party would have. But I think you all need to have a healthy discussion about it to get it finally done, if you're gonna do it or, uh, do something. That I yield to.
I agree with you, Mr. Valley. I, I wish the, the mayor, the, it's some people out here who would be willing to do that. And as a, as a member of this body, I would like to see that done, as like the third party person, people or group or whatever, it's to come in and do that, and I could, we could help support them, that takes away from the city. Now, the city can provide two employees. We have, uh, one of the employees, I think he's moved from another job. So we have one employee that's here, I, I would think the city could provide two employees salaries and whatever, I mean, this is, we need to see what the county would do, because dogs are brought in here, there is more than just the city. The county is here, it, it, you know, county should put its part in, just like we do for anything else that, that concerns things. But I really believe that the county has, that they bring their dogs to here. So I think that you, the judge, and, and some of the people that you know, Miss Kathy Bissell and some other people who have these organized, uh, dog kennels. Things, get them on board, and I'm willing to help. I'm not willing, I'm, I'm willing to help fund or whatever needs to be, they need to do, once you could get them in a place to, to sit down and talk to them and see that this, that, I'm just speaking for me, I don't know what everybody's around the table, but I do think that I'm willing to support some, probably two employees and some kind of something else, that we can, that the treasurer and the treasurer can tell me a number that we can afford to give, I wanted to do that.
Ms. Ford?
Yeah, two employees would be more.
I, I spoke with a, a citizen today that's involved with dogs or whatever. And she spoke to the fact that we don't have a dog personal animal control, and I thought we did it part-time on the weekend or something like that.
We have someone who's state licensed, uh, and in, in the case where we have to have somebody state licensed, we'll still call on him, but, uh, but he's not, that's not his dog. Per se, we don't fill the position animal control with a person. So. Well, we didn't, we haven't, I mean, I think, well, I guess my, let me, let me, let me change that.
So that's what I was.
Before, before, before that person got in the code officer. In the street department, but I hope that answers your question. So I know there's another gentleman, another employee who was licensed at one time. I'm not exactly sure if he's still current, uh, or even if he's still working for the city.
He does.
But, uh, the bottom line is though, I think that, um, the biggest issue in the Columbia situation, in Columbia, I'm very familiar with it. In fact, they tapped my car a couple of times going to, to the church, St. Mary's. And there's a lady who claims they're not her dogs, but feeds them and follows her everywhere and on a pretty day especially, will be down on Columbia Street and, uh, and the dogs will get out in the street and they're very aggressive. We don't have a place to put them, and we haven't had a place to put them for over two years now. Because the, you might say for Delta, stop taking animals. So the problem is acute and, but I'm not here to debate that, I'm just trying to answer your questions. Uh, and, and I think we all know it's a serious problem in our streets. We have people working on bike trails. We have a huge bike group coming to town in the morning, um, with their tap by dogs, they're not gonna come back. And I mean, I've had, my, my own wife has been attacked by dogs. Uh, I've even been tapped by dogs. And she's a bike rider, she's, she's been attacked so many times, she's afraid to bike ride anymore out, out, outside. So, I mean, there, there's a very important issues, I know you know that, but the answer to your question is, strictly speaking, we don't have a full-time animal control person. Until we have a facility to take animals, there's really not much we can do with animal control to that point. And part of the plan that you've talked about includes uh, a holistic plan, you have to have a place to contain them to be compliant with city codes and state laws and other things. Otherwise, you don't really have a stick. Or you have is carrots, and we don't have a lot of carrots. So I don't know if that answers your question. I, I really mainly just wanted to announce the grant, thank Kathy Bissell for her generosity. Introduce that to y'all, like I said, uh, it's, I'm not asking you to do anything tonight because you didn't know about it in time to before the meeting, I just thought it was good news and wanted to announce it, but I will take any questions.
And may I have this also? Kathy Bissell, thank you, but Walmart store manager Angela Lorenzo has been reaching out to you. She says she hasn't got a call back, she was seeing that Walmart was looking to donate some money to help us. But you hadn't returned a call back, she has been calling. And a lot of people in the community has been looking to work to help with dogs. I think that you're unavailable to the people.
I, I'm not aware that she's ever called me or that I haven't returned her call, so I'm not aware that that's true. She may be calling the wrong place or something. She's not calling me.
Can I finish, man?
You gotta, if you're gonna make that statement, then you need to let me answer.
Man, I'm, I'm just telling you, I, I, I was in her office when she called. And I don't know if Miss Havens was out that day, but she did tell me, she said, you know, she had reached that. And this is not a political tackle, you, I'm just telling you that there is a lot of help out here. People want to help, so it's not bashing you, let's get some understanding here. The lady said to me when I came back to work, Mr. Franklin, we've been trying to get in touch with the mayor. She did call, she asked me to come into office. Angela Lorenzo, seven fourteen Walmart store man, did call with a voicemail. She is saying that Walmart would do anything and everything to help the city of Heldon West Heldon with the dog issue. There's food with kennels or anything, she's saying that she's in a position. Just like we announced Kathy Bissell, Walmart here that's, that, that supplies with a lot of jobs, local jobs, people work. They are trying to help us. So tomorrow, or whenever you have a chance, please, Mayor, sit down with Miss Lorenzo, I think tomorrow's Wednesday, she's off work, but Thursday, Friday, she'll be at work. Sit down so we can get some, some, get the other person who, who I'm sure you're familiar with, that handles, uh, the issues. I think that we could get this done together. If you're poorly is, if you're poorly everybody, we should have enough to build a facility that the city does not have to sponsor. We can, we can have food, facility, cameras and all these other things. Maybe we should take a little bit of time, because she approached me. And I, I, I watched her call the mayor's office, I gave her the number, because some, some numbers that call City Hall could myself, or I think I need to check that on your webpage too, because when people call and they call me and I have to give them the number, I've told you there as well, Happy was there. So there's help there, not, that's help, people want to help us. Because I understand dogs is an issue, but get all the help we can, because the more help we get, the less strain is on the city. Am I right, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I will, I will look at, uh, you know, I'll certainly double check my ma, my messages. Uh, if she called recently, you know, I'll, maybe I missed, so I apologize if I missed your phone call, but I haven't seen a phone call or message at this point. But it's possible that I haven't reviewed them all. So we'll try to get ahold of her. Any other questions or comments about the grant? Alrighty, uh, so moving on to Violet Circle, Miss Crockett?
We approved the repairs of that street. I'm just wondering why it has, it not has, why it hasn't been done, because the issue that started out one way is getting worse, it's getting worse. Because I was just over there because I was called to come see, and now there are huge holes in the. So I'm just wondering why we approved and it, it was never anything, but it didn't go any further.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say it hasn't gone any further, it hasn't been done yet.
That's, that's, it ain't going no further.
But, um, the request of their preparation was, I think, almost thirty thousand dollars. And there's one house on it. So what, what I would like, and I'm trying to meet with Miss, Miss Mr. Rowan, he got the bid on asphalt.
Resigned construction, Tony Davis.
Tony Davis.
We had two, we had two bids, you know?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
And we approved, we approved that bid, so.
Right, but that doesn't mean we have enough money to do it.
It was said the day that we approved it, it was enough more. That's been how long ago, Miss Rain?
Uh, we bid it. Back in August of twenty-one.
It's almost, it's, it's been eight months.
Right.
But, wait, let me say this before, because I know you're gonna try to maneuver and say that it ain't this and it ain't that. Oh, but it's been a lot of other things that have come up besides that, and I, I heard you say that it's one house on the street or whatever. I know a lot of things that we, it was one man that his, uh, that he said it flooded his house, they fixed it. So I'm just wondering why if it's been appropriated, it's been bid at all and approved. Why is, is, it's like, I'm not gonna do this, because I don't want to do this, but I'm gonna do what I want to do. Because when the man's house flooded, it didn't take but, it wasn't a whole day before they were out there repairing it.
Can, can you tell me who you're talking about?
No, I don't want to talk about.
I mean, I'm not sure, I'm not aware of what you're talking about.
Nobody else remember the man's house flooding over on West Street that were, uh.
Stone Brook?
Yeah.
I remember that.
Stonework.
And they went out and.
They wanted more money than that, it was like twenty-two thousand dollars and then they said, but you know what, you know what that came from? You know, and I answered the question, not to get, you, you're right, Miss Crockett, not to get upset, but those people who were doing those, flushing those valves out, those people flush those valves, that has caused a lot of problems for the city. Because once they flushed those valves out, well, my street, the pipe bust, and water ran all through the deputy sheriff's house, and we had to repair it, the water pressure in those areas that they've been draining those waters, those, those hives out. We need to make sure those folks had issues, because we, we, we're accountable for.
I'm, I mean, I'm not aware of the situation you're talking about, and if they, if they have, if they, if they, let me finish, if they have issues, they should bring it before us, I'm not aware of them. But the, to go back on Violet Circle, it's about a thirty thousand dollar appropriation. I ran into the property owner, we had a discussion a couple of weeks ago. I, I, I think he's willing to, um, work with us if, if I can find out how much it costs to really not do the whole thing, but to do enough of it for him to be satisfied. Um, and I don't know the answer to that, and I'm, I'm, I'm meeting with, uh, some folks, I think it's tomorrow afternoon. Give me a better idea of what it might cost to do, um, to be part of that. But we have, and, and y'all are all aware of this, we have a lot of places inside the city limits with a lot more homes on it, with a lot worse situation, Holly Street being one of them. Um, there's a patch on Holly Street, but I'm also trying to get some idea of what it would cost to fix, to bring for you. Um, this hasn't been fixed primarily because of the water leaks, there's no sense in fixing it, only to see it destroyed again. But the water leaks, uh, are supposed to be fixed now, so can we go in there and fix all those potholes on Holly Street? That's just one among many streets.
I know, because I'm on Holly Street right one.
So it's, it's. So it's a, it's a question of prioritization. It's a question of of uh need. And a lot of, there are a lot of issues that go into it, and we don't have an infinite amount of money, so. Uh, but I have talked to the property owner, I'm gonna say he's been reasonable. And I I think it will work out, but it's it's difficult to spend that much money and do the other things. And I think he understands that he's been reasonable, and I I think we can come to some agreement. It it would be good if I had a better understanding what it would cost to do, what he will be happy with, and that's kinda where we are right now.
Can I say?
Let me ask you this, man. What was the purpose of us getting the bids? See, that's, that's my problem with this. We go through all of these steps of getting bids, doing this, approving this. And then when you feel like it ain't, it maybe it should have started out as you want to say. If you had have taken the time to go to see what was going on, instead of sending somebody saying, go get a bid. Maybe you could have, at the beginning, it could have been saying, well, if we fix three fourths of the street, it gonna cost this much. But it, this, this was in August when we approved this. But it was like June, May or June, the rainy season, May of last year that it started. So it's gonna be May again in a few minutes, a few days. So, to me, it's, it's like the council really has no purpose, unless it's something that you wanna do because no matter what we approve, when you, and I know you have the right, as they say, to pay or not pay. But don't let us go through all of this and have people thinking that they listening on the radio saying that this gonna be done. And then a year later, it's still not done. That's the same thing that happened with that uh, that that money that was up there that we approved for the work to be done for the uh water department. You let the money sit there until something else came up, and then you wanna make it seem like the council is the one that's always going against the grain. It's not that, this doesn't make sense. This, it, I don't know about anybody else, but this is just like you think you have a dictatorship that is, I'm the mayor, I'm the CEO of the city. I don't care what the council says, I'm gonna do it my way. This man has been going back, I don't care if it's a half a house, that that hole that you're talking about on Holly Street. That 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 been there since I was a little girl, I'm fifty six years old. So, you know, they've been fixing that forever. So don't, don't make it seem like this is something that just came up. So we gonna have to make a decision. Them people pay taxes just like everybody else. And I know it takes time, but it's like you handpick where you wanna fix it. Call the people from, go do this right now, go do this right now, when certain people call you. Just like the thing with the uh sewer that we voted on, we threw all of that. But yet still, when you wanted it done, you went right on ahead of the door, no, against all that we had voted on and everything. You spent that money. But now you're conservative, so I don't, excuse me?
You're making, I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm talking about when the lady was called, talking about the raw sewage and you went about that excavator. Don't try to. You don't know you, but you you, we voted to wait on all of that. But you went, cause I guess you got two or three calls from some people that you think each other answer to, you went against the council and did all that, but we have approved this. Appropriated, but you won't do that. So what, what, what's our purpose here?
Well, let me, let me, let me clarify a few things. You did approve the excavator and it just.
No, we did not. We, we, don't, don't, don't try to clarify it and make it seem, we approved it, but it was repealed. Ms. Ramsey told us that the, it had not been ordered and it could be uh that we could.
That she didn't order it, but I did.
It had not been ordered when we repealed the mayor. It had not been ordered.
When it, when it comes to large equipment purposes.
It had not been ordered when you get the.
Usually is the mayor who who makes the order, so the question would have been directed at me.
We did.
And I would, and I did answer that it had already been ordered.
No, you did not.
And it was unfortunately.
It had not, well, okay, it might have been.
Bottom line is, when, when I ordered it, Mr. Val, let me answer, I've right. This is a point of personal order, you're making accusations and not backing up.
I'm speaking the truth.
As usual, no, you're not.
Speaking the truth, and you lying.
The appropriations and the authorization was made by the city council for many excavator months before the sewage problem you're talking about, and it was, it was the state A D E Q that required that work to be done and still does require finished.
Then you require you just go buy no excavator.
The excavator was not purchased for that project.
That's what you said.
It was used, no, it was used for that, but it was not purchased for it. It has multiple uses and it came in and it came in.
I'm finished, what's next? She wanna update on the total, of course, so I, I'm not gonna even go back.
Miss Cracker.
You just think that everything you say, and then you get on here and try to outtalk somebody about what you did. You did what was against the council. The council voted to repeal that, then you had them to deliver it. The council voted not to get those dog cages. You had them delivered. That's the money we done lost. So don't try to make it seem like it's the council, cause I am so sick of it. It doesn't make sense. We are all adults at this table. And every time we come to the day table, if the council said bow on, you said we bow out. If you, if we said bow purple person, you said we bow to green. You can never go with what the council want unless it's something that you want.
Miss Cracker.
Miss, Mr. Mayor.
When it comes to Violet Circle, it is, you you appropriated it and you authorized it, and I said at the time that I did, no, I said it at the time, that the issue with these kind of projects is prioritization because there's way more need than we have the money. Now that it's been approved, well, we'll try to find a way to negotiate with the property owners so it so that other people aren't complaining that.
See, that's what you worried about, what other folks was saying. But you weren't worried about what the folks.
I'm, I'm worried about it. Miss Crockett, I'm worried about it, cause they would, Miss Crockett.
But don't holler.
They would be.
Do not holler at me, you have to, don't go to, cause I just told you, I'm as grown as you are.
And you're talking over me, some people can't hear me.
You do.
Mr. Valley, let me, let me.
No, you always wanna say what you got to say.
Miss Crockett, you're the one who won't stop talking. I'm trying to to tell, tell you that other people do matter because they are taxpayers too, and they also have a lot of street issues that have many houses on them, and it's a question of prioritization because we're a poor city. And we cannot afford to do every street all the time that needs it, all at the same time, so we have to prioritize. And it's, to be fair to all citizens, we have to do that the best way we can, and we are not perfect by any means. But, but we have to try to do our best to prioritize because all citizens have a right to have their roads paved, but we don't have enough money. We're a poor city, so that means we have to make hard decisions. Y'all made hard decisions, you appropriated the money, but we still have to spend it. And that's where I come involved, and administration comes involved, and the parking heads come involved. Mr. Valley.
Can we table discussion for just a moment? We're about to lose a form on the settlement of the lawsuit that Ms. Ethel has to leave in just a moment. That's, that's all I was trying to get to. Or can we go to the settlement agreement?
Well, if, if, if Miss Crockett, if Miss, if Miss Crockett. If Miss Crockett has no objection, then we'll move on past to to, and then, and we'll.
Was Ethel said, you're leaving in about ten minutes.
Alright, so we'll um move, Mr. Valley, if there's no objection, to the discussion about the um. But Mr. Mr. Frank, can you add a word? Mr. Valley, you're recognized.
Uh, there were two uh documents that were prepared by attorney Ju- Justin Eichman for the city council review. One is a resolution that didn't have a number. What number would this be, Madam Clerk? Uh, there's language that we, the mayor had specific acts to be in it that you all had agreed to put in it. And the language would be a paragraph six that's not in here, and the language would be that when the funds come later this year and the amount is one point two million, one point one million, that none of those funds would be used for bonuses or or out of the funds. We we'll get the precise language, but it's not in in this. Uh, in drafting of this, that's, that's part of the thing that the mayor requested you all voted on the last time. And he wanted to make sure, cause it doesn't say that in this resolution, he wanted to make sure that it's added a paragraph six. Uh, so, uh, what this does is what you you all discussed, uh, the paragraph six needs to be added. What it does is gives the remaining one thousand dollars to the employees that have been paid in an appropriation. Uh, it doesn't make a difference between part-time and full-time. Uh, it settles the lawsuit because the resolution incorporates the general release in this. Uh, for checks to be executed, uh, the attorney, James Valley, and his clients would have to sign the release that's twelve pages that's incorporated here in, it's recent lawsuit, dismissal lawsuit. Uh, this, this would include.
As we discussed with the lawyers when we had the agreement. And I, I, he, description, and I sent it, and I thank everybody that we had the discussion with got it. And he said he had it, but I haven't really seen any of that in writing, um, like he said he would, and that, that's an issue. It's not just that it not be spent on, it's what it will be spent on, and and that's, that and the bonus for me is the only exception. So I, I just wanted to clarify that, and back to you, Mr. Val.
Listen, James Valley, did you have anything to say?
Go get this done. Uh, that's most important, uh, but I did uh, review the recital. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that um language in paragraph two. Uh, it seemed to be limited. And perhaps you didn't want it limited in that fashion. I'm talking about the general release. Um, it's actually paragraph five A two. So it ends up being on page three of twelve.
Yes, it was amended about four fifteen. Oh, Mr. Eichman sent it at four fifteen.
Okay.
He amended it, and it just said city council members in the first draft, but it it added elected officials in the second draft.
Okay, cause I had a paragraph, I was going off of she.
Mr. Eichman, he told me, he received an email from you or a text, and he changed that that paragraph to show uh, sex, section five A two, re-specific it now, is that uh pertinent part. Uh, five thousand dollars less user tax withhold paid to each plaintiff city council member and elected official of the uh city of Helen West Helen will be paid from general funds and not from the American Rescue Act funds.
Okay, now that, that includes the elected officials. And what about those other employees that were uh not necessarily qualified under the initial resolution? Of course, one of those is a plaintiff, so that person will be covered. But there may have been two or three others.
I think they ended up getting paid.
They did.
The, the four thousand dollars, cause it was like on police officer and the chiefs that weren't, that I think they ended up getting.
Sorry, they already got the four, so they'll get the one.
I think they did.
So that's not a issue.
Oh, that's right.
Right, I believe the, since the following your lawsuit, the city did rectify and pay four thousand to the chiefs, three thousand, oh, the three people, okay.
And we were, and and the issue was there, was the municipal league wasn't sure if they could or not, and when they said we couldn't, we did.
Okay.
Right, uh, but I I would double check the the language in in section two, if we need to amend it, we'll amend it, but uh, to make it clearer, but the intent, the express intent of section two was not to sound councilmen, but uh, the elected officials in in that paragraph.
Okay, and I I am.
And then, yeah, the third thing that I did mention, it it still shows the ten thousand, section three shows ten thousand dollars attorney fees paid to planet's council, which is.
Uh, I I should have gone up by now, much work here, I'm making me do, but I'm gonna leave it at ten for now.
If you do it tonight. Uh, and so, the language that the mayor wanted to add is a paragraph six. Uh, the mayor also wanted a portion where it says elected official that his that he is, uh, he wants to amend paragraph two of the release to to say that he specifically rejects uh the funds.
I thought that all he had to do was write a letter saying he didn't want it. Why does it have to be in there?
Um, he could write a letter specifically saying he didn't want it. But paragraph six is what he wanted added to the resolution about appropriation of one point one million from the American Rescue Act.
And it, and and I kinda asked the same question, is that if if it's a court order and there's ultimately a a settlement that is a court order?
Yes, it will be a court order, just gonna say it's gonna be dismissed.
I don't want to, I, I, maybe, would that letter be would that letter do the good in that situation? I'm trying to avoid giving it back, having to pay taxes on it.
Well, well, any elected official can write a letter to the city clerk and the city treasurer and say that you do not wanna accept the compensation that's that's in the settlement.
So then, if you don't receive it, you shouldn't be taxed on it.
Correct. Right, it's a matter of of uh.
Well, I, if if y'all are satisfied that that would do it, I'm satisfied.
Now, uh, resolution forward to twenty twenty two would have to add the paragraph that the mayor stated specifically that no uh bonuses would be paid from the remainder of American Rescue Act funds that are that are due later this year in an amount of approximately one point one million. And he says specifically that as part of his agreement with it, that that those funds will be appropriated for the water department, is what he had said previously.
I thought it was just, did it say that in the first round that?
In his first round of negotiating, that's what he was, that's what he was uh saying, he'll go along with it if y'all go along with those terms.
About the water company and all?
That's what he said at the last meeting.
The, the, the meeting being the meeting with the lawyers, not the service council.
Uh, correct, correct, but let me, Mr. Miss Crockett, that's correct. I'm talking about two different meetings. The mayor and I, after we met with you all, we met with Justin Eichman by conference call. Uh, that's the lawyer on the case, and the mayor said he wanted that specific language in it in order to get it done. Now, when I talked to him over the phone at that last meeting, that's the language he was speaking about, when he said that he put that language in there so that the mayor wouldn't veto it. And that's, that's where we are at this point, but we'd have to add a paragraph six to say that.
Well, uh, the water department? Or I thought it could be used for any other, other projects.
Uh, currently it can, but in order to sell this lawsuit and the mayor not object to it, he would want it to go to the water department.
Me personally, I I think that that the water department was, this is just me speaking. The water department was in trouble financially when we, when the mayor declared an emergency and spent money that we still don't know what he spent on. I do believe if you allocate this money from the water department, it was, the mayor would say he saved the water department from a crisis that he allegedly put the city in. I don't, there's other things that we could do with that money with the city, uh, if if we can basically make sure we gets other things because the mayor, and the mayor has never put a plan together for the finance that we had, when the mayor started putting the plans together, it was after the fact that this body made some other decisions. But I don't think that's fair to the citizens, because if you're gonna do that with the water department, show us a plan. What plan do you have in action? Cause USDA.
What plan do you have in action cuz USDA rule water? I'm sorry.
Go ahead. But I'm saying. I, I think part of it is you all still have to come back and appropriate the money. What he's saying, you don't even have the money yet. What he's saying is that the agreement would be that you all was spent on the water department as appropriated once it, once it comes.
And just to add, it still has to be in compliance with the American Rescue Act. It still has to be in compliance with the American Rescue Act. And, and Mr. Turner can speak to this, he's one of our experts on it. But they definitely made it easier to comply with than the first, the first amount of restrictions that came out. But there are still restrictions and it still will be audited. But water and sewer is probably our most emergent need as a city with all the water leaks, with all the other issues. Where Mr., in fact, Mr. Patterson is not here right now because we have a very pressing issue in West Elma right now with water. And it's, it's a result of many, many, many years deferred maintenance before the rights were adjusted. And, and so, so I mean, we are now dealing with many, many emergencies. In the water and sewer, we all drink water, we all depend on it. So basically, the agreement is that the American Rescue Act money be spent. The next chance of money that we get in May will be dedicated to water and sewer projects. But it will also have to be in compliance with the American Rescue Act, so keep that in mind too.
This Crockett can't vote, uh, seize, seize the lawsuit, that's why we, that's why it's a pressing issue. Okay, so resolution four dash twenty-two with the amendment to add the language of the paragraph six. And incorporating the general release. It would state that, that the city council agrees. That once received, the one point one million dollar for American Rescue Act will be appropriated. For water department projects. In compliance with American Rescue Act.
Mr. Adley moves, makes a motion. This is resolution. Resolution four, is there a second? Ms. Davis seconds the motion. Any other discussion, questions about the motion? If not, call the law.
Davis? Crockett? Franklin?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward.
What's your vote, miss?
Okay, I have four yes, one couldn't vote, one absent.
Motion passes. We would need to release, execute it and the resolution amended and then we could do that tomorrow. I don't know when must have available to do the release, but after that, then the city will be free to, to do all the, the drafts. I have one other issue that's not on the agenda, previously on agendas, but was left off this. Yeah, we're done with that. What's rather, could you give us Eichman tomorrow? Okay. Yes, there's a contract. We've been doing contract with professional services relating to appearance and propriety. Previously, Mr. Chuck Halbert and Ms. Amy Green have, have been prosecuting cases involving James Valley. Mr. Murray received funds where there's a new prosecutor that's added to do all misdemeanors. And currently, the city still owes Mr. Halbert and Ms., Ms. Green for February and March. We would want to do a new contract with Mr. Nap, Mr. Nap. We were paying five hundred dollars a month to each one of them and Mr. Nap is asking fifteen hundred dollars a month. The difference is this, when we would use the two of them, they didn't handle conflicts involving city council members. And for one contract, for one contract, we've spent, the city has spent approximately nine thousand dollars. With this guess for prosecution of two elected officials. And so, Mr. Nap was saying that he would not recuse from any of that kinda stuff unless it's something personal. And he's asking for fifteen hundred dollars a month. He's gonna do, the other issue too is my wife attorney, Keisha Non Valley, is now a public defender. She does primarily the county cases, but if there are more than one defendant on the city docket that needs a public defender. Then she would have to do those and Mr. Nap would agree to do those as well. But this should reduce the conflict thing and there are several. There are several contracts, there are several affidavits right now on my desk involving clear conflicts back and forth. Relating to members of the city. And those, those need to be handled as well. And so I think that, I think it's reasonable to, to do it, especially considering. It's not, and that will not be by the hour. And I think that we need to finalize the payments to Ms. Green and Mr. Halbert. And so in March, it would be to Mr. Now. April, I'm sorry, thank you, April would be the most now. But he just started, the prosecutor's office received some funds to, for him to prosecute all misdemeanors. I met with him, I met with Mr. Halbert and Ms., Ms. Green. And I met with Mr. Murray, Mr. Murray thinks it's best that we contract also with Mr. Naps. So he'll be doing all the misdemeanors since he specifically wants Mr. Halbert and Ms. Green to do the felonies. Uh, they hadn't been paid, when I met with Ms. Ramsey, uh, the other day, hadn't been paid just due to candidate cash flow.
So the, the question for the council is whether to approve personal services agreement. For Mr. Donalde Knapp Junior. In the Knapp Law Firm in the city of Ellen West Elma. In cases involving conflicts of interest up to fifteen hundred dollars per month or at the rate of.
But.
Fifteen hundred dollars per month. Doing payable by the tenth day of each month. Mr. Adley moves adoption of the personal service agreement as stated, is there a second? Ms. Crockett seconds the motion, any other questions or comments about the motion? It might call the law.
Davis? Etherly?
Yes.
Forward. Crockett?
Didn't pass. I'm, I'm not gonna bother.
Oh, okay. One no, one absent, one abstention, three yes.
Well, at this point, we have no prosecutor for those cases.
Mayor, that I was recognized, I was only going back to violent circle. The reason why I was going back to violence circle, not to disrespect you and me, but you see, I wouldn't recognize. I was only asking the senior attorney at the time, you know, could I speak after he had got through with it? And you just told me I wasn't, I was not trying to disrespect you. I was asking the city attorney at the time, could, once we got this issue resolved, then could I come back and speak? And you just did that, my only thing with violent circle is this mayor, any, any other things?
You would, you'd like to be recognized, continue the discussion on violence.
Yeah, and, and just, uh, just a couple, a couple more things as well with.
We just asked that the homeowners be placed on the next agenda. So that they can come to speak because it seems to be a conflict in what the mayor is saying with the home.
Well, and I, I can agree, this is all I have, I got a couple of things, mayor. It did, and I, and I respect you. I'm not gonna get loud and get out of character with you about this, I just want you to just reflect on some things cuz I reflect on some things. I reflected on when those, when, when, when the people had the issue with the road and violent circle, it was, it was like we can get it done, we can get it done. The people of violent circle are just in the point of the people on rolling oaks. Then we took a hundred thousand dollar excavator that we could use down there. Don't cut me off, just listen to me cuz we're not gonna fight about it, I'm just gonna paint a picture and I want you to understand my masterpiece, how I come down. On violent circles, that's, 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 we first, we went through things that that wasn't city property. We found out that city property was developed, I placed the thing from the county showing that this is in the city limits. I placed it in everybody's mailbox, they came and put it on everybody's table. That's true, we, we did a, a, a bid. Riz line wanted, they should be qualified, they are qualified in the job, watch this. Now, the city council, a couple months back in February, there were, I think, twenty-second, if I'm not mistaken. When the city council had a meeting about. The sewer pumping up into somebody, where somebody could see. All these people called in, we got some people from Forest City come in and dig and cut trees down and do all this thing. Without council approval. But, but you said it had to be done, people got called, charges got filed on people for being almost a property, just, just, just different things. And you're, were you aware of that cuz me, you saw each other down there on that street with all the city, all the city workers. What they, that works for the water problems down there with the, many excavators that we could, that you ordered, the, the city council said we weren't gonna appropriate. You decide to call somebody and they brought their own excavator to knock a tree down and to get the, the sewer line temporarily fixed. Right, we could agree on it, right?
They fixed the sewer line temporarily.
Temporary fix, right, right, right. So think about this, it's a temporary fix, but then it has to come back. You wouldn't even give the people on violent circle a temporary fix like you did on rolling oaks, right? I understand that sewer, I understand this, this is the city road, we abandoned our property, right? We can agree that we abandoned because it shouldn't be fixed. Now, the map, the picture I'm painting is instead of going back and forth with this Crockett, anybody around the table. See, we all, you went over there, you did something over there. We came back, me, made, made the motion to help you get that fixed. You could even say, hey, I will give fifteen thousand dollars right now to get some of it fixed. And when I can give the other fifteen thousand dollars to get the other things. See, something had to be in the middle. See, that, that, people think that this, all we do is argue and fight from this day forward, I will not raise my voice, I will not argue with you. I'm gonna try to help you because see, if I help you, it better helps me. Because right now we're on a sinking ship. The thing that's best for you, that thirty thousand dollars you spent. Or other things, you could have this street paved, that could have been out of the way. Because if I was the mayor, you know what, whatever mayor that's sitting in the city has done, when they get in trouble, they come to the city council. Now, what you were smart about, you said the city council has to vote on that road. If the city council had, had have said no, you know, you should went back to homeowner, the city council said no, not me. But you know who looks bad in this situation? You, because the city council voted to fix it and you refuse to look at the picture I just painted for you. It's not the body, it's the mayor. If you can't find the money, you should have came back to this body and said, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do a patch until I can get it all done. Because you gave me thirty thousand dollars to spend, but you know, you have to think about what you're doing and how it looks. You go over there and fix a street that we told you not to even go on because they told you a couple of months, not, not to go, then beg up cuz that's not the right thing. You decided that it would happen way last year, we just got to it this year over on rolling oaks. Mayor, what I would like you to do, you gotta treasure, you gotta a well-rounded treasure, well-rounded city attorney and city clerk. They are put here to help you. I need to try to help you, I, I mean, anything I can do to help you, I will. You have to stop resisting some of these issues. Everybody's watching me and everybody's watching you. So together, do what you can. And, and Ms. Crockett, Ms. Crockett is passionate, she's not arguing, she's passionate about what she believe in, Ms. Ford is passionate, Ms. Davis is, is passionate about. Help Ms. Davis, many things since I've been here, since we joined the council together in twenty-teen, it was about these houses and these lots. That's been her, that's, that's been her, her thing, everybody has something. And I think you, I'm, I'm pretty sure you're gonna run for reelection. You need to have some things to make people good. Because, you know, you know, it's a resistance from you and me. But we can put this, the, the difference aside and let's work together. You can get some houses torn down, you can get some streets paved, you just kinda blocked it where you will have this money for the water department. You should think about how can I maneuver some of this money to take care of different issues? And, and people will be, you, 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 you're in a position now you can satisfy the people, you got one point two million, right, Ms. Ramsey, don't come in to make. One point two million, right?
One point one.
One point one, you, you can satisfy a lot of people, you running for reelection, you kinda wanna win. So it's not, instead of the, the, the fight taxes that you do at the table. To, to make Ms. Crockett like, to make Ms. Crockett satisfied, to keep her people, the, the voter in. You could take from Ms. Crockett and say, hey, let me, let me, let me go cope these people on violent circuit so I can win. Because I'm pretty sure that you wanna finish out, you, you don't wanna be a one-term mayor, I'm pretty sure you wanna be a two-term mayor and on and on. And I think that you could do it, but I think that you'll have a hard time if you keep being resistant to some of these people around the table. Because everybody around this table bringing a crew of people with it. So mayor, think about what you're doing, violent circle, other streets in the city. You know, th- this body has done great things, put sky cams up. The, nothing that you have done would not have been successful if this body has not said yes to. We have said yes to everything, it is to help improve health. And I would like for you to try to work with Ms. Crockett, Ms. Davis, Ms. Ford and myself, Mrs. Stinklin and Mr. Etherly, both in the absence. Work with her, Ms. Rams as the city treasurer, the city clerk, work with her, Mr. Attorney and City Treasurer. And also the great city attorney that we have worked with these people so we can make hell of them good. Because once you come in off the highway, you, you always say that we are poverty-stricken town. Guess what, we may be a poverty-stricken town, but we sure paying good salaries cuz you get a nice salary. And these elected officials, city attorneys, city treasurer, city clerk, you all, everybody who works for the city is paid nicely. And they do a wonderful job, so we have to be careful, we say we are poverty-stricken town, we are a town that's struggling. But if we get the right, if we get the right leadership in place, we could go places. So by that being said, let's work together.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin and Ms. Crockett, we'll continue to work with landowner and. It's, 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 I, I really don't think we have a conflict other than. I'm, I'm not really. Well, I wasn't asked, necessarily asking you if, if I could talk, I'm just saying. I'm just trying to say. Just trying to say that there's nothing acrimonious about the project. I wish as a politician for sure, I could pave every single road and take credit for all of it. But the truth is, we don't have enough money and I can't do it alone. I appreciate the appropriations, we got other projects that also need to be appropriated. And we have a lot of hard decisions to make about how the resources actually get spent. And we don't have enough money to pave them all at the same time, I wish we did, I would, that'd probably be the most popular bear in history if we could do that, but we can't do it. And, and that's my only point, so I hope we come to some agreement with the property owner. And at the same time, can fairly and equitably use our taxpayers' money on other roads. So now it's eight o'clock, but I don't want to cut anybody off.
If, if I may, man. One thing I would ask, since, since you all have, you all have said that you are gonna appropriate one point one billion off of water. Can you all work together, give a comprehensive plan as to what you are gonna do for water? And the, the issue too, may have, you may have forgotten, but this Crockett asks for what the money has been spent on already. And that, I think if you go forward, we could deal with all those issues and just get the water provision done. So the citizens would know what's going on and how we're gonna spend the money going forward. You have a couple of months to get it done and I think a comprehensive plan would be best. So everybody will see what's going on and see what the status of the water company is and how we're going to improve it. You all have already made the agreement that when it comes in, it'll be one point one million spent for that purpose. Since you know that what you're gonna do, why don't you go ahead and do a comprehensive plan?
Well, we, we've had some plans that we had the emergency meeting on back in March, I think, a year ago. That we paid Jack Ross to help us with. And I agree with everything you said, except for one thing, we don't have a lot, we don't have several months, we need, we're gonna get the money in May. We should work as hard as we can between now and we get through the, the money to be able to hit the ground running and make sure these things. Because the city is, excuse me, many years behind. Many, many years behind and there are a lot of reasons, no finger pointing and needed to be, needs to be made there. It's just a fact, we're way behind on deferred maintenance. We're way behind on deferred maintenance. We have emergencies almost every week actually. And we're going through one right now, um, in West Helena, involved in the water and sewer department. And, and it all comes from decisions that probably could have or should have been made a long, long, long time ago. Uh, it's way more expensive now. Uh, this one point one million dollars is a windfall. We're very fortunate. We're gonna get it. We should be getting it in May. And I agree with everything you just said, except I don't want to wait several months. We need to, we needed it a year ago, two years ago, ten years ago even. So, uh, I don't want to wait any more time on it if we can help it. So, but having said that. I'd agree with the rest of what you said and, and maybe a more structured, uh. Or go back to what we tried to do, look at it or relook at it, take another look at it, at the plans that we've had and present it again and go over it again. I think that's a good idea. So I'm good. Ms. Davis. Yes, yes, I think it's the same one. We've sent people several times out there. It sure is. I hadn't, I hadn't, uh, I haven't seen where he's reached out to me in the last week or so, but I'll reach out back to him. But we have, I just say, you know, we have sent several people out there several times. If he's still unhappy. And, uh, then we'll see what we need to do to take care of it. So he's still unhappy. He still has sewage in his yard. So there's sewer in the yard, but it's, it's not putting any more in the yard. It's just what's already there. Okay, I got you. And yes, yes, Ms. Davis, I will.
We have on Jackson Street, we have on Edison where I live, when you all flushed that valve. We have pipes, they, they fixed the pipe, but you still smell raw sewage in the alley. In the back of my house, the back of Detective Holloway's house. You, we, you just smell like the sewer issue. Uh, the water pressure on Jackson. Uh, I think, man, we, we should go back and look at the people who flushed those hydrants. Because a lot of issues did, I know you wanted that done, but a lot of those issues have come up from, you know, flushing those hydrants. And I do believe we have some, there was something else going here. I think we need to talk about these, these, uh, contracts.
Okay, just hold on one second. Are, are we, should we move on? We're gonna stay around?
We, we, we could table, cause I know, table all the other issues. Ms. Davis, make sure you put these, these contracts. Uh, that, uh, like these purchase orders, those back over there, we have, uh, some. The body probably, when they came to get something, did just a minute ago, like these right here, these computer monthly service. Those are serial contracts that we need to look at. Uh, those are a lot of things that we, like these purchase orders from three ten. Uh, I want to make sure when people doing business with the city, because we, we need to make sure everybody has an occupation license. Because I have run a business and I have to have one. You have several people, uh, you have people who's. And paid some, some money over and over for different jobs and I don't handle any operations, Mr. Man. I'm just saying with the pay is. Over and over. You got some people got paid forty, forty-six hundred dollars. Nine hundred, forty-eight hundred dollars, forty-seven hundred dollars, forty-eight hundred dollars, forty-one hundred dollars. Uh, forty-one hundred dollars again. You have another one that's forty-four hundred dollars.
Ms. Franklin. Are, are we taking this up now or do you want? Do you want to title this to the next?
I'm just saying, you know what? So you can get your, your stuff together. I'm just saying, you know, I'm gonna table it. I'm just saying, you know, you can have your stuff together. I'm not gonna interrupt you. I promise. We gonna have, we gonna have a good year. This, this year will be good for you. I'm just trying to make sure all these serial contracts that this body knows nothing about. Because see, it, it always paints the picture that we're fighting you. I'm trying to help you. I want you to be successful. So we need to slowly talk about the, the spending. Miss Sandy just signed the check. She tried to find the money, her, the treasure, make sure that we can pay him. So when you, we just need to let this body know what's going on because we're out in the dark. Mr. Valley had said something that the newspaper talked about, about. When, when Mr. Valley said that there are serial contracts and things that are not being brought to the table, it got put to the back of the paper. But I want you and the, and the listener, I understand this. That when Miss Davis do something wrong, it's front news. These serial contracts and everything else that you do and anybody's done is hid to the back of the pa- paper. I'm just, I'm just using David as an example, but I'm just saying. But I'm just saying, I, I, I'm, I'm just saying, but.
You, I wish I can get on the back, but.
Well, well, but let's understand, I'll joke aside, Mr. Mayor, the spending, the spending that you're doing with the serial contracts, it's not fair to this body.
Everything you just said is an allegation. But that, that you just said you wanted to move to the next.
I, I do.
Okay, then, no, Ms. Franklin, no, you just asked for it to be.
I got other issues.
We're moving that agenda to the next meeting.
So I have another.
Wait a minute, just one thing at a time. Everybody's time here is important. So now the, the other two things on the agenda. Are the treasurers and clerks, of course. Do y'all want to move those to the next? So we're gonna move those. So there is no other business come, just on the agenda that, that has to be. Provided to the public in plenty of time. There is no new business that's been done, reported to the public. And plenty of time to be in compliance with public meeting laws. But having said that, Mr. Franklin, do you have anything else before we? And I'll let you make a motion so we can adjourn. Do you have anything you would like to say?
This way, we, we can adjourn because we, we're gonna deal with this. Mr. Valley can adjourn after he's finished speaking.
All I'm suggesting is, is this like we did, uh, during your first term or maybe the second, uh, year of your term. At some point, we probably ought to have a few more meetings. We have these two-hour meetings. And some of this financial stuff you all need to just address and just have a meeting about finances. And we deal with the other general items because we're getting farther behind and we're constantly postponing stuff. But, uh, that's just something for you all to digest and think about. I'm willing to meet more, if you all are willing to meet more, especially if we're gonna have shorter meetings. I'd rather have more meetings.
Mr. Valley, you, you also forgot one thing. Do we need to table your, uh, people attending the meeting? That's on the agenda as well. Would you like to table that?
I'm sorry.
Well, I, I think the issue with that, that's a simple matter. Uh, the city council in charge of the real estate. Uh, uh, during COVID, the, the mayor had, had, had issued an executive order, I believe the second order. That, that limits the, the council meetings. And I think that you all can just resolve that this evening that. Uh, but you all need parameters as how you're gonna do it. Do you want to open meetings? Do you want, uh, people to have to wear masks, et cetera. Uh, but you need something this guy, but I think the public has the right to be here and, and, uh, they should be allowed to be. We still can do it by Zoom as well. Cause some people want to see you watch, people nationwide are watching it via Zoom. So I don't think y'all should take that away, but.
So, Jark today.
I'm just one person, Miss Davis, one person, Miss Ford, is one person. I think that we should allow the other members of the body to, to, to. Express their interest on that. Uh, me and Miss Davis and Miss Ford, I think we, we all can agree, we'll just wait on the rest of the joy of the body. And let them put their input because I don't want it to be said that we should have consulted with them. And I think ladies, I'm not trying to speak for you all. I love you all to death, but I just think that. I, I, me personally, I would just like to wait.
We all just want to table that too. So we don't have the votes to pass it, if you think anyway. So we'll, we'll table that as well. Anything else come before the council? Ms. Franklin moves German, Ms. Davis second, no objections.